Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals, held at the Ashland Town Hall on the second floor Select Board Hearing Room. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform for convenience only. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. However, the meeting will continue. Meetings will continue to be broadcast on WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. On the agenda, there is a link to participate remotely from the computer, and there's also a telephone number you can dial in and also participate via telephone. First item on the agenda is calling the meeting to order. I, John Trefethan, am present.
I, Brian Forrestal, am present.
I, Stuart Siegel, am present on Zoom.
I, Ryan Sullivan, am present on Zoom.
Excellent. All present and accounted for. Also with us this evening is Jasmine Ferronachi, our Director of Planning and Economic Development, and Brian Winter, our Town Council. Item number two on the agenda is a continuance of a public hearing on 55 West Union Street, a 40B comprehensive permit request. This matter was, has been scheduled several different times. There is a request from the applicant to reschedule tonight's hearing. We have yet to receive the additional expert opinions that we are awaiting for, peer reviews, so we can proceed, and the applicant is as frustrated as we are in not having the ability to move forward on that without the peer reviews, and suggested that the matter be continued to our next meeting, which is scheduled for next Tuesday, November 25. And what the applicant has suggested makes sense to me. Fellow board members, any opposition to continuing this until next Tuesday, by which time hopefully we will have at least one of the peer reviews back so we can start to make some progress on this matter?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Stu, Ryan, you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Makes sense on my end as well.
Okay, then someone like to make a motion to continue the public hearing on 55 West Union Street to Tuesday, November 25 at 7:00 PM?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent. That matter is taken care of. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to item number three on the agenda, which is a continuance of a public hearing on 10-60 Main Street, again, a 40B comprehensive permit request. This matter has been on for a hearing numerous times, starting on January 7, 2025, and continuing up until our most recent hearing on October 28, 2025. At that time, we reviewed waiver requests and asked Town Council to begin working on a draft decision. The hearing was not closed out but remained open. The applicant has been kind enough to extend the time for completing the hearing to, I believe it was a date in December?
After the next hearing.
After the next hearing, okay. So that's where, that's where that stands. So the matter, again, the here, the 40-day period for deliberation and rendering a decision has not yet started to tick. Town Council did send out on Friday a preliminary first draft decision, and the emphasis is, the emphasis is on first draft, and all board members received it over the weekend, and I believe the applicant received it yesterday. Okay. Let me turn to Town Council and ask what, what you would like us to do this evening. Obviously, the first draft is a very rough draft. How would you suggest we proceed on this tonight?
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me mention a few things. As you noted, we have a rough draft. It's now just a working draft that's been circulated. The board has just received it very recently. The applicant just received it very recently. We're also going to circulate it to our peer reviewers, a few choice participating department heads that have provided written comment to the board and suggestions for conditions. And so we're going to do another version of this. I assume at some point when the applicant's ready, we'll receive some red lines, some comments from the applicant's team as well. And so my hope would be to return to you with a second draft that incorporates and integrates those comments. So I know this is roughly, what, a 50-page document? There's a lot of material in here. And I'd like to hear, you know, whatever feedback the board would like to give preliminarily at this point. But I would just caution you that there's gonna be probably a lot of revisions between this draft and the next draft as we go along and incorporate those changes and comments and suggestions that I receive from people. And when we get that next draft, I think that would be the time for the board to really go through this paragraph by paragraph and page by page. But I wouldn't suggest you do that now because it's gonna change, and then you'll end up doing it again. And so let me make two suggestions. One is through Jasmine and myself, we're gonna circulate this and solicit those comments on a staff level. Second, I expect we're gonna receive some comments from the applicant's team. And third, I might suggest if the board is amenable to this, maybe scheduling between now and the next meeting a workshop with just staff and maybe just one representative of the board, but not a quorum of the board. And that's not to make any substantive decisions. In fact, it's not to make any decisions. It's just to go through the technical stuff and the polish, the wordsmithing stuff, to make sure that we've captured everything in there, that there aren't inconsistencies, that there aren't deviations from plan references and things shown on the plans, that kind of technical cleanup stuff, so that the product we come back with you, for you, the next meeting, is as good a draft as it can be. So I think that would be maybe the most efficient use of the board's time. Obviously, I'm open to suggestion, and this is just my recommendation. It's nothing written in stone by any means. And I think we have, I know the holiday is intervening between now and, you know, slightly after your next meeting on the 25th, so the time's a little compressed here. But I think we would be able to come back to you with a greatly enhanced version by that time.
Okay. Question, you mentioned a workshop. Our next scheduled board meeting is next Tuesday, the 25th. Would the workshop that you're referencing be something that would be scheduled between now and the 25th, or?
Ideally, it would be so that we can use the time that we have most efficiently.
Okay.
So that on the 25th, the board would have as close to a final draft as is possible by that time, so that you could then start to take up, you know, well, how do you feel about these conditions? And how do you feel about the way we worded the waivers and things like that? And that would be the time when you could really have that robust discussion about, is this a draft the board is comfortable with? Why or why not? And I don't think it's there yet, and that's why I'm kind of discouraging you a little bit from, from getting that deep into it. But I think we could be there by the 25th if we're able to schedule a meeting like that and just work out those things between now and then.
Mr. Engler has a question, so why don't we have you go up to the podium, if you would please, and?
For the record, Jeff Engler from SLV Ashland, the applicant. I thought the next hearing was the 2nd, not the 25th. I didn't think this matter was gonna be discussed next Tuesday. I don't care if it is, but here's my take on everything that was just discussed, for what it's worth. We just got the, the decision yesterday. I've, I've read it. I didn't have a chance to read it until last night. I circulated it to my team today for their comment, but I'm wondering if it's a fruitful exercise for us to review it now because it seems like there's gonna be a lot more comments coming in, and then we're reviewing it again for all the stuff that we haven't seen. So based on what I've seen to date, I don't think it's gonna be a massive review on our part. I mean, there's some wordsmithing and some other things here and there, but it sounds like there may still be some material additions, changes, what have you, conditions. So it's more of a question is to, should we hold off on reviewing it until we get a more comprehensive decision inclusive of all the people that you've circulated to? Then we'd be happy to provide our comments to that version, and then as Council described, would be happy to have a working group session. The likelihood is it's probably, I don't think we should have a working group session until we have all the municipal comments and the decision, because it wouldn't, I mean, if there's some big thing that comes in after the working group, it kind of defeats that purpose. So I would suggest we get all the comments from the departments, Council incorporates them into the version, it bounces back to us. We don't need a lot of time. Then we sit and go through the decision in that working group. I don't think it'll be, you know, a long drawn-out discussion. And then as Council represented, and I think the objective is to come back to the board with a comprehensive decision that reflects everybody's comments and agreement on language. With the holiday next week, the likelihood of that all getting done by two weeks from tonight is challenging, shall I say. So if we have to go another meeting, so be it, because we're at the end and I want to get this right. I would just ask that the town, you know, and I know this is delicate, but if you're not getting feedback, you know, from a certain department, it's not fair to everybody involved to just wait for them to, you know, comment. So hopefully there's some deadlines, whether it's DPW or whomever, to say, here's the draft decision, you know, you have a week, get us your comments. So I, I know I threw it a lot, a lot at you, but those are my, you know, initial, I, my initial comments based on what I heard at the beginning of this meeting.
Hey, I'll for just a clarification.
By all means.
Just in, in soliciting comments from department heads, we did get those comments, so I'm not expecting any kind of wholesale additions or subtractions or, or major deviations. It's just that I wrote things based on those comments, and they haven't seen the thing that I've written. No, 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 and I didn't, I didn't state it very succinctly. And so what I'm looking for is, is a check to make sure it's consistent with what the suggestion was made. But in terms of the timeline, as Mr. Engler said, he's willing to work with us a little bit here, so it is gonna be really difficult to, to do all of this around the Thanksgiving holiday. So we could do my first draft or second draft between now and then, and then do the workshop after that. That would be fine as well.
I mean, maybe, you know, a week from Monday, the week we get back for the workshop. I mean, that gives you effectively more than a full week. We'll give you our, we'll have our com, I, I misunderstood. That's a big difference, because I thought you hadn't heard from anybody, and, but it sounds like that's been incorporated. They just haven't confirmed that you got the language, in which case we'll have all our comments to, to Council by Friday at the latest. You know, we'll, we're gonna have our traffic and civil and everybody just to review it to make sure that there's nothing. And I've looked at it, I don't think, and there's a couple missing, you know, dashes, and I can help Council fill in some of the blanks with some of the information, make sure we're all on the same page. So we can get Council, you know, our version hopefully on Friday, and then, you know, maybe we do a working group session. I think that would be like December 2nd or something, maybe that Monday or Tuesday, and then we come back, and then we wrap it up at the next hearing. So that, those are just my preliminary ideas.
I think we could do that certainly, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, we would just need an extension, because I think our extension's good through the fourth, so we just need one more to get us through that.
Okay.
And if the applicant's okay with that, then that would work just fine.
Let me just check with my fellow board members to make sure that everybody's on board with that and what's being proposed makes sense to me. Ryan, how about for you?
Yes, it works for me.
And Stu?
It's okay with me.
And Ryan?
Excuse me, that works for me as well. I, I did want to note, though, that if you look at the, the calendar online, maybe it's just not updated, shows that next meeting is being the 7/9.
Yes, it was, for some reason, that wasn't in there initially, and I think it's now been added. So don't we have, is the November 25th online?
It's not showing.
Okay, because what happened? That's the fourth Tuesday of the month, and we meet every fourth Tuesday, so why wasn't that initially on? Throwing it off by moving the? Okay. But it's gonna be posted. Okay.
So, so am I understanding then that, let, let's just say for discussion's sake, we continue, is there a meeting on the 2nd or whatever that Tuesday is?
No.
No, there isn't. So I might have had that wrong. I just assumed it was an every-two-week cadence.
Well, I think what threw things off is we had Veterans Day.
Right.
Which was, would be the normal two-week period, and we pushed it back because of the holiday to tonight, and then?
So, so that actually ironically might work better, because, you know, we then use the beginning of whether it's the 2nd or the 3rd, and then we reconvene on the 9th. And I, I think it's realistic that we can have a, you know, a, a fully vetted decision by then, and I can easily just give an extension, you know, through that public hearing, if that makes sense to everybody.
Okay, so that makes sense then? And we're gonna continue this matter to not the 25th, but the 9th?
Might want to still continue it to the 25th in case we have more to report and discuss.
Okay.
But we'll just keep, because you can't prepone it, but you can always postpone it to the 9th, so just as a placeholder.
Okay.
Just in case it's needed.
Okay. Sounds good.
And then I have one other question. Will we hear from Jasmine or Council relative to some possible days and times for the working group?
If that's okay with the board?
I think so, no. For the working group, as I understand it, it's not a public meeting.
Correct.
And because of the open meeting law, we can't have a majority of the board at the, at the working group. We can, because we're a three-member board, we can only have one, one member at the working, working session.
If you wish to have a representative there, then it can only be one. And I think it's valuable just to have one representative there, just so we can get some feedback. But obviously, because it's not a board meeting, it's not being held in public, it's not subject to the open meeting law, no decisions can be made, and I'm saying this for the benefit of the board and also people listening. It's just a, a technical staff level kind of event for us to do wordsmithing and, and cleanup and things like that. No votes can be taken. Everything has to come back to the board.
Okay. This is the first time that we've had a working session since I've been, I've been the chairman, and I think it may be the first time since I've been on the board. So I just wanted to make sure we all understood the parameters of what it is, how it functions, and go from there. Okay? Okay, so, motion to, oh, actually, before we do that, do we need to decide?
Yes.
Who the representative of the board will be at the meeting?
Yes.
At the working session?
So who the designee would be.
We need to designate a board member to be at the working session, and presumably the working session would be during a weekday?
Preferably a weekday, regular business hours, a town hall.
Okay. So with that parameter, who wants to be a, on the working session?
I nominate John.
I second that nomination.
Okay.
He asked if you accepted.
Yeah, I know, I, I know.
I noticed that.
Now I'm on the, okay, I will, I will agree to do it, but thank you. Okay. Okay, that's fine. So I will be the board representative on the working session. And then we need a motion to continue this hearing to the 25th?
So moved.
And that will be the 25th at 7:00 PM. And is there a second to that?
I just have one comment. I don't think it matters, but I, and I don't think it supports expectation, but just the level set. I'm not gonna be here next Tuesday. I never thought we were gonna be on, so I don't think I need to be here, but just if I'm not here, I don't want you to take it as a sign of disrespect or whatnot, but I won't be here next Tuesday.
We then just continue it.
That's right, and I really asked for it just for my sake, in case I have a report or something to update the board on, the full board.
Okay. Okay, is there a second to the motion to continue to the 25th?
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent. Okay, this matter stands continued to Tuesday, November 25 at 7:00 PM. Okay, moving right along to item number four on the agenda, and this is deliberation on 61 Waverly Street, a 40B comprehensive permit. This matter has been heard numerous times, starting on March 25. The hearing was closed at our last meeting on October 28, and thus started the 40-day period of deliberation, before which we then have to render a decision. So we are well into that 40-day period. Town Council sent out a draft, rough first draft of the hearing decision, which again was distributed to the board over the weekend. I believe the applicant, who is present and will be identified in a moment, received the decision yesterday. Mr. Lopez, do you want to step up and let's see where we're, what we can accomplish tonight? You did, you did receive a copy yesterday, I believe?
I did, Mr. Chairman.
I know you were kind enough to send an email to Council and to Jasmine this afternoon indicating that there were some comments that your group wished to make and, and whatnot, which is certainly fine, and also questioning whether we were going to begin deliberating tonight with, we're in the deliberation period, time period, but were you present during the discussion that Council had with the prior applicant about the process and what he was proposing we do tonight as a board?
I, I came in towards the tail end of that. I think I got the gist of it, but it'd be great.
Why don't you sort of go over what you, what you're suggesting we do?
Sure, sure. And it's a little bit different with respect to this project, because I've, for the last project, I think I had received comments from department heads and peer reviewers for this one. I've received some comments from department heads that have been integrated, but not the peer reviewers and their conditions. And so there are some things that are substantive that are gonna need to be integrated. And so what I had suggested to the board with respect to the last project is that I'd like an opportunity, before the board really sinks its teeth into this, knowing that it's gonna change, and for your benefit as well and your team's benefit, that we have an opportunity to get a second draft, that's, that's a more integrated, complete draft, before we start doing that exercise. And so what I suggested to the board is that between now and the next meeting, I get those comments from my side and integrate them and get that to you, but also hear whatever comments you have, if you're inclined to. I know you don't want to review things redundantly, but to the extent you want to provide comments, provide them to me, and I'll then integrate those into this draft. And then what we had suggested we do at that point is to schedule a workshop when we can do some of the, the fine tuning and the technical stuff, and then bring the, that report back to the board. And at that point, I would hope to have as nearly a complete draft as possible for the board to actually take action on at that point. If we deliberate on each one of those things now, my concern is that it's really not complete, it's not to that stage yet, and we're just gonna bring it back, and it'll look a lot different. And so that's why I thought integrating those comments, then having a workshop, and then scheduling time for the board's next meeting to be the time when we go through this paragraph by paragraph, condition by condition. And then at that point, it'll be pretty close to done. And so I think the board's time would be better spent working on that version. So that's what we had discussed prior to your, your arrival.
That makes total sense. And I, I, in my quick review yesterday, I noted it's a very extensive and detailed document. There's some things there that, some conditions that I know that we discussed during the course of the hearings that weren't fully reflected in there. So I know, obviously, it's a very early draft, and I think we should be in a position to get our comments on this draft, which I think will be helpful by this Friday, by the end of this week, we should be able to do that. And so I think the timeline that you've laid out works, and if you need comments sooner than that, for whatever reason, we can try and accommodate that as well.
And you're, Council, you're suggesting another, a workshop with this as well. You would, talked about a workshop on the 10-60 Main Street project, also another workshop on this?
Yes, and I think our timeline is a little different because the public hearing on this is closed. Believe we have until the 7th.
We have till December 7th.
Which is a Sunday, right?
40th day, that's a Sunday.
Right, which means if we have a meeting on the 25th, that could be our last meeting unless we schedule one, like on the 2nd. There's still another Tuesday in there, but I understand the board has other obligations, and it's not always so easy to schedule a day.
I was just gonna say, in, in my cursory review of the document, you know, I don't think that we're, I don't, I didn't see anything in the document that, you know, was not something that could be kind of taught through, you know, with some email correspondence or, you know, perhaps with another hearing. So it may be that a workshop is not necessary, just based on the comments that we provide back to the draft that we do have. So maybe that's something that could be determined, you know, as we go.
Oh, why don't we keep that, keep that open then, and we'll play it by years, what's necessary? Because obviously, the 40-day timeline is something that we have to stick to, and if we have to schedule an additional hearing after the 25th and before December 7th, then that's what we will do.
Yeah, and, and I agree with that, Mr. Chairman, just to hold on to that maybe for now. And it's true, because I haven't received those comments yet. It's possible that we're farther along than, than I'm anticipating. It's just I know how, you know, the last one yard can be very difficult. There's a lot in here, and there's a lot to discuss, and where we haven't had, you know, a full board deliberation on this stuff. Going through this at that stage can be very lengthy, and if we're having a dialogue about each sentence, it's gonna be a really long meeting. And so I want to get it to the point where you don't have to have that necessarily.
One thing I think might help, timing-wise at least, is that if Mr. Engler is not going to be here on the 25th.
Yep.
Then the amount of time that the board needs to spend on that may not be as lengthy as it otherwise would have been if he hadn't agreed to extend the time we have to proceed. Okay. Fellow board members, having heard all of this, does that work for you folks?
It works for me.
And Stu and Ryan?
Works for me.
It, it does work for me. My, I just have a question, though. If we end up needing to meet the, the 7th, I think the, the Tuesday that follows the 25th, would we have sufficient time to provide the requisite notice for that meeting if we decide that on the 25th? Or are we gonna have to figure that out now?
I mean, public notice is what, two days?
Forty-eight hours.
Oh, it's only two? Okay.
Forty-eight hours, so we'd be good. And again, just for clarification for my fellow board members, Stu is sitting on the Waverly Street project as the voting member. Ryan is sitting as a voting member on the 10-60 Main Street project, but everybody, all of us are able to comment and ask questions on the draft decision and whatnot. It's just the vote one has to sit out, that's all. So just to clarify- So just to clarify on that. Okay, anything else we need to do with this before we take a motion to continue it to the 25th?
No, the next steps, we can handle administratively, and we'll be prepared to report back on the 25th.
Okay. Everybody all set with that?
Yes.
Then we're going to need a motion to continue our deliberations to Tuesday, November 25th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent, okay, thank you very much. This matter is continued for further deliberations on Tuesday, November 25th at 7:00 PM. Thank you. And next item.
I know, just remind people that there's going to be another public hearing on that. Public hearing is still open on that.
Okay. I wish to apologize to those who are present who may wish to have spoken on public comment for the 10-60 Main Street project. That is still an open hearing, and we will have an opportunity to comment next week. And it totally skipped my mind not to open it up for public comment tonight, and my apologies for that. The 61 Waverly hearing has been closed already, so the public comment period for that is over, but 1060 Main Street is still open, so, and I know two of you in the front row here frequently do comment, and I do apologize for overlooking that tonight.
Next week, next week or the 25th?
The 25th. Okay, next item on the agenda are.
Just want to add that any written comments can be submitted between now and then if they wish to, and that would make it into the record as well.
Okay. Counsel reminded me that written comments submitted between now and next Tuesday also will go into the record, so if you wish to make further written comment, you can do that, and it'll be entered into the record. It's not just the oral comment at the end of the hearing night that we'll take.
Question, is it possible?
I'm sorry, could, we, I couldn't hear what she said.
I believe she asked about asking a few questions just generally on 40B matters, but both of the 40Bs have now been continued.
Yep.
So maybe I'll stick around after the meeting, and I could speak with you just for a moment, if that's okay.
That's fine with me. That would be helpful. Okay, next item on the agenda, item number five, approval of the meeting minutes from October 14th and also October 28th, those were distributed to the board last week. Jasmine, did you receive any proposed changes from any board members?
I did not.
Okay, with respect to the October 14th minutes, any questions, proposed changes? Brian, Ryan, Stu?
None from me.
If not, we have an entertaining motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent. Next item is a consideration for the minutes for the October 28th, 2025 meeting, those were also sent out to the board last week. Jasmine, any proposed changes from that?
None.
Tonight? I have two. On the first page, we're references Brian Winnetown counsel being present. He was via remote for the October 14th meeting, but he was in person for October 28th, so remote should be removed. And on the last page, on item number, on line 509, considering the motion, concerning the motion continuing the hearing on 10-60 Main Street, it says the motion to continue the hearing to November 14th at 7:00 PM, and it was clearly to continue to November 18th tonight, so that would also need to be changed. Anybody else have any other changes in the minutes?
I do not.
Ryan, Stu?
None.
Okay. Someone wished to make a motion to approve the minutes as, with those two amendments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent, we are all set, then. Item number six, staff updates and administrative matters. Jasmine, anything to report on that?
Nothing new.
Good, we've got enough going on without anything new. And finally, board members, anything to add? Nope, okay.
No, sir.
Silence is golden. And item number seven, adjournment, someone wished to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
To Tuesday, November 25th.
I don't think we do that, we just adjourn.
We do? Oh, okay, so we'll adjourn. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestal, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent, thank you all, thank you, WACA TV, and good evening, everybody, have a happy Thanks, no, we will be meeting before Thanksgiving, so I wish you a happy Thanksgiving, but the next week you'll have already bought your turkey.